Good evening and welcome to the NORAD School Committee meeting of Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. Once again, coming to you remotely. The full committee is here this evening, as well as the number of administrators for appearances that they will be giving us. First order of business is approval of minutes. And we do have three sets of minutes in our packet. We have business meeting minutes from December 16th. We have executive session minutes from December 16th. And then we have minutes from our special meeting that we called on December 30th. Is there a motion from the committee to approve these minutes? Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Nikki and Marie, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, minister approved, five to zero. Thank you. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving right along to warrants. Jeff Katania, could you please read the warrant report for us that you signed?
Yep. So I signed on behalf of the school committee, warranting amounts of $9,432.90, $19,914.74, $353.81, $5,745.95, $66,883.64, $12,742.60, $314.60, $25,856.35, $15,408.46, $1,479.39, $1,089.43, $2,911.25, $2,398.31, $91,759.77, $197.71, $10.00, $10,273.65, $38,607.79, $109,382.39, $10,172.27, $144,320.45, $79,095 even, for a grand total of $930,174.84.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from the committee on those warrants? Okay, moving right along to public forum. As a reminder to the community, the way that we have been conducting public forums since March 2020, and will continue to do so until we no longer meet, meeting remotely, is through the email address that we created. And the public forum email address is npschoolcommittee@norad.k12ma.us. And you can email us at that address for us to read, for me to read emails during public forum on any issues that are under the school committee purview. I'm just going to check that email address again to see if anything has come in. So it is 7:15, and at this time, I do not have any email addresses or emails requesting to be read in public forum tonight. So I'm gonna declare public forum closed. And now moving along to our appearances. Our first appearance this evening is members of the school start time task force. We do have with us tonight Mr. Riley, Dr. Galligan, Dr. Frazek, Mr. Bishop, Ms. Mullen, and I believe Mr. Quigley. I hope I did not miss anybody from the school start time task force. But the members are here to talk with us about the school start time initiative. As a reminder to the community and to the school committee, there is a webpage that we created on the district website that has the materials we are gonna reference this evening. There is a recorded webinar that Dr. Galligan, Mr. Quigley, Ms. Coppola, and I did before break. There is an FAQ document that the task force compiled. There is tons of research that we have been looking at over the last three and a half years that we have shared, so you can see everything that we have been reviewing. And there are also all of the survey results from the staff, student, and parent surveys that were conducted in fall of 2019. Since we put all that together and did a recorded presentation, there will not be a full presentation tonight, but really just picking up where that presentation left off. And I believe, Mr. Riley, you're getting us started this evening?
Yeah, that's correct. I'll also mention that Principal Coppola is here and Al Bishop from transportation. So Madam Chair, Dr. Thompson, members of the committee, thanks for having us tonight. We are here tonight, the members of the school start time task force, to present our findings from the work that we've completed over the past two years around the idea of adjusting school start times in Norwood. I'll be kicking off our dialogue this evening with a brief overview of how we've got to where we are today, before some of the other members of the task force provide additional details of our work. The pieces of information, as Teresa mentioned, are on our website and have been provided. So if you're following along at home, right there on the homepage of the Norwood Public Schools website currently, is a whole lot of information that we have put together over the past two years. In 2017, the school committee established a subcommittee of members to determine relevant or to examine relevant research around this topic and hear from the community through a number of community forums. Many of those community forum videos are still up on the NPS websites. That's also something that the general public can can check out. Following the subcommittee work in June 2018, the school committee directed Dr. Thompson to form a task force to examine the feasibility of adjusting school start times to reflect the research around optimal learning times for our students. The first meeting of the task force was in September 2018 and has met consistently during the past two years, with the exception of a brief pause during the pandemic last spring at the start of that hour. Efforts and minds were elsewhere. In addition to a number of NORAD Public Schools departments, including fine arts, athletics, food services, transportation, and extended day, the committee also included a parent and a student representative. Tonight, we'll share some of our findings with the hope of providing the committee with important pieces of information to consider in determining next steps with this initiative. So next, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Frazek.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna step in here. Ryan Quigley was gonna talk a little bit about what we, kind of the foundation of why we decided to look at this, which was the sleep of adolescents. And just a brief reminder that the way that our adolescents, which ranges from 10 to 24, and as a parent of 11-year-old, no one was more shocked than me to find out adolescence starts at 10. But children 10 to 24 really have different sleep patterns than do younger children and then adults starting from 25 and on. They tend to fall asleep later, they tend to wake up later, and most importantly, their deep sleep comes later. So if you look, for example, at students at the middle school, we are currently requiring them to wake up in the middle of their deepest, most formative sleep time in order to get up and be ready for school. So that was really the foundation. And obviously, our Madam Chairwoman is the expert on sleep. So if I've said anything wrong, hopefully she will correct me on that. But that was really the foundation. And it wasn't, this is not something that just we're looking at here in Norwood. It is something that is being looked at nationwide, something that has already been done at an international level. So that's kind of the foundation of why we decided to take a look at that. Obviously, a lot of areas get impacted if we decide to change the start time of any school, let alone all the schools. So I'm gonna toss it over to Dr. Galligan to talk a little bit about high school and after-school athletics and everything else that gets moved when we move something like that.
Thanks, Dr. Frazek. One of the most common questions we get in relationship to a shift in school start time, not just in Norwood, but in many districts that have completed successfully a shift to a later start time, is what happens to after-school activities, including fine arts, clubs, and athletics? And so in this shift, and we'll get to what the specifics are in a little bit, but all after-school activities and clubs will continue to run in an after-school format. So nothing shifts for school, nothing shifts significantly later, although there will be some minor shifts. Fine arts activities already run largely in the evening. That will, those will continue to run with virtually unchanged times. Minor shifts here and there, but those shifts are really unaffected by the change in the start time. With athletics, the practice time would remain the same as it is currently this year, which is 3:30. So there's not a significant change there or a change at all from our practice time this year. Athletic contest start times currently start at either 3:45 or 4:00, depending on which team we are playing and the location of that game. We expect that during this time, most start times are all would shift to 4:00. Many of our games already start at 4:00, and so that is not a significant shift either. And the question that many people ask is, you know, what happens to, potentially to that time in between when school ends and when, when an after-school activity starts? And, you know, certainly we'll work with our adolescents and our young adults in our school to be able to plan their time effectively, capitalize on that, and also make good use of times that we're hopefully planning on building into the high school schedule in the future. Later in the school year, the committee will have the opportunity to hear a full update on the high school bell schedule committee and their recommendations on changes for the future. But a key aspect of that is building in time during the school day for students to have flexible time to be able to address some of these needs. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Coppola.
Nancy, I'm muted. Sorry. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. As you can imagine, a shift like this will affect parents at the elementary level probably the most in terms of an extended day program. Parents will need childcare options for children earlier in the afternoon. As a result, we will continue to have an extended day program. It's currently at all four elementary schools and at the Willet. The start times will change, obviously, to meet the needs of parents. The before-school program, which is currently not in effect due to the pandemic, will be reassessed as we move into the fall. And then if the times change, we'll also be looking at that as the feasibility of changing that or adding to that program. But at this time, we intend to offer an extended day program for children. And what that looks like will really depend on parent needs. And I think I'm sending that over to survey results.
That would be me.
Frazek.
Comes back around. So we surveyed our middle and high school students, parents, as well as our staff, about what their concerns might be, what their feelings around sleep and students might be, and their overall academic performance as tied to start times. And you have the survey results in front of you. I'm not gonna read off every slide to you. I know you can take a look at those yourself, but just kind of highlight some of the major findings, which is, you know, the staff definitely found that students are sleepier, in particular in the morning. I know at the middle school level, it's, it's pretty evident when they come in at, you know, 7:05 or 7:15, that they are sleepier. We do have higher rates of tardiness, bigger attendance issues, things of those nature. 232 responses indicated a later start time would provide more sleep, would, you know, equate to a better mood, more energy, and all of those big pieces. The flip side of that, students are worried about the things you would think. When am I gonna get my homework done? Might this impact my after-school job? How might this impact athletics and things of that nature? For our parents, you know, that we had very sort of mixed results in terms of what do they feel is the best form of sleep or the best ways for sleep? But I'd say the biggest issues that parents are concerned about, you know, as Nancy touched on a little bit, is childcare for younger children. Certainly, their children, you know, their older children's ability to care and watch out for younger children. I would say that the parents at the middle school level were in agreement that the middle school starts way too early. It's really hard, it's hard to fight that when kids show up in high school at 7:05, that that's too early. But raising, you know, normal concerns. But on the flip side of that, almost, you know, noting that their children's, you know, kids do seem stressed, they do seem overwhelmed, they do seem overtired, they do struggle to go to sleep at night, regardless of when they have to get up in the morning. So there's some areas there. And as I noted, you know, the staff did really recognize that when students are tired, they are more dysregulated. They certainly are not at their best, they're not going to relate best to others and meet their potential for academic achievement. One thing we had not put into your packet was kind of an overview of what some of the staff concerns were. And I think they're, they're not unusual and certainly worth talking about. Definitely, there was sort of mixed levels of support at all of the three grade levels in terms of changing the time. And I would actually wonder what that survey would look like now, because everyone's schedule is so very different. This year was so much more of a heavy lift that I wonder if it would seem a little bit less overwhelming. They were concerned about being able to provide students help after school if we move to a later time period, especially at the, the middle school and the high school level. The need to adjust schedules for childcare, for second jobs, things of that nature, commute changes. And, and wondering whether or not kids would benefit from the switch. And I think that's an important one to address, because I think the amount of data that is out there grows and increases, showing that there are dramatic improvements when we change start times for schools. The longitudinal one that happened in Seattle definitely demonstrates that. The districts, even in Massachusetts, that have made that change, their short-term data is also demonstrating that as well. So certainly, teachers always worry that something that we try and change is not gonna have the effect that we want. I think humans worry about that. This is, this is a big shift for that. But I think the evidence is really in favor of making some sort of an adjustment. And so then I'm gonna toss it over to myself. I don't know how I ended up talking about these slides. I'm like, wait, my name is still on these slides. So basically, we are making a recommendation to the school committee. And this is what our recommendation is. We are recommending for our elementary schools to change their start times to a range of between 7:40 and 7:50, ending around 1:55 PM. For the Willet to start in a range somewhere between 8:00 and 8:10, ending somewhere in the neighborhood of 1:30 PM. The high schools starting between 8:10 and 8:20, ending around 2:50. And the Cookley, the middle school, starting around 8:40 or 8:50, ending somewhere around 3:20 in the afternoon. And I just wanna note that we gave ranges, just because when we actually sit down, if the school committee does in fact vote to make a change, we need a little flexibility when working with our transportation to make sure that the buses can all line up and that sort of piece. So we didn't, there, there will eventually be actual start and stop times. We will not leave this sort of a nice ambiguous range of times, but we wanted to leave them at this point, narrow them down to where we want them, but didn't wanna pin ourselves down to 8:43 in the morning or something along those lines. It'll really depend on bus drop-off, bus pickups, and how the bus routes work. So that is our recommendation. And I'm going to toss it finally to here, to Dr. Galligan to finish us up.
So now that we have provided a really quick summary of the years of work that the start time committee has put in, both, you know, dating back to 2017, and then kind of in the really three iterations of the start time task force. And, you know, it's a comprehensive amount of work done, and we wanna thank the participation of our students at the secondary level, our families at every level, and our staff at every level. Certainly, this is a big decision. We've made a lot of big decisions this year. And I think what Dr. Frazek said is interesting, that, you know, in light of all of that, this may not seem as big as it once seemed. However, the body of research supporting this in terms of the health of our young adults, especially at the secondary level, is crucial. And at this time, all of us are available here to answer or try to answer any questions that the committee may have for further discussion. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening.
Thank you to all of you for that quick recap tonight and for all the work that you've been doing over the years. So I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues, since I have been heavily involved in all this in three and a half years and have no questions myself, but I'm sure others do, after tonight's presentation and all the information that was online. And just, Dr. Frazek had mentioned that the data around staff concerns wasn't in the, it wasn't in the slide, the recording presentation, the recorded presentation that we did. But the school committee does have access to all of that in the school start times drive.
It looks like Teresa got dropped.
There we go.
Well, we're waiting for Teresa to jump back in, then I think, as the vice chair. Oh, here she comes back. I think it's my, okay, good. So yeah, 2021 is, you know, continuation of 2020. Let's just say that. I have no idea what you heard me say. I had a whole spiel, and then I realized that everybody was frozen, and I probably lost my connection. Where did I leave off that you heard me?
You were turning it over to, to, to the other members to ask questions.
Okay, perfect. So I'm turning it over to everybody else to ask questions. So.
Right, the only thing you couldn't do was pick on the person who wanted to ask the next question.
Okay, well, good timing to lose the connection then. So Maya, did you have a question, or are you just jumping in for me?
Jumping in for you.
Okay. So questions from the committee?
Hi.
Yes, I can see you. Go ahead, Dave.
Not necessarily a question, but a comment. I looked over everything. It's very compelling. I mean, I feel vindicated, because I was always accused of like falling asleep in school, and now I know why, because we start so early. No, I mean, that's, it's, it's really compelling evidence, and I think that we should do everything we can to make it so that we have a later school start time. The benefits are tremendous, you know, more attentive students, better behavior, everything you can ask for is probably due to lack of sleep, because we start so early. Nice thinking was to prepare us to go in the workforce, but, you know, there's time to learn that, too. That's what college is for. So, but yes, I'm all in favor of it, and I just wanna know the best way we can move forward with everyone that's a stakeholder in this process.
Thank you, Dave. Other questions, feedback from the committee? What, one of the task force members, oh, go ahead, Mike, do you have a question?
I did. I, I know that, or it was my sense that busing had driven a lot of the decisions about when, you know, schools started. And our current bus configuration, I believe we have, you know, obviously, the middle school goes first, and then the high school in St. Catherine's are kind of in the same block of time roughly, and then the elementary schools, and then obviously the Willet. Do, could we, can we do this schedule with St. Catherine's at roughly the same time as the, at the high school and make transportation work as it does now? Or do we, would we need to add more runs?
So is Al on the meeting?
Yes, I am.
So would you please answer that question for us, Al? And thank you for the thorough analysis that you did for the task force. In the recorded presentation, we went through thoroughly with the five different options that we reviewed. But even before those five options, Al was running other analysis and did a tremendous amount of work. So I do wanna acknowledge that.
Sure. Bottom line, of course, I came in kind of in the middle of this when I became director, but not that it was a challenge. Basically, the mandate I was given is to keep this class neutral. So we were able to do that, but the only way we could do it really was by the schedule that we presented to you, elementary first, high school second, middle school first. We did participate, or we did have the St. Catherine's folks participate. We believe that could be integrated into the schedule, no issue, with no additional impact financially or in any other aspect. But we feel very comfortable that we can make this work.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
And, you know, one of the questions that I'm sure people watching this tonight will ask us, because I know not everybody has had a chance to see what is on the website yet. We did first start with the question of, well, can we just have the entire district start at 8:30? You know, so keep the elementaries where they are, not impact the elementary level, and just meet the recommendation of the AAP at the secondary level. But unfortunately, that answer was no because of budget. And Mr. Bishop had run the analysis and estimated for us that if we start at the entire district at the same time, increase our bus fleet, that would be an additional $2.5 million a year.
Again, part of the problem is, is geographics. I mean, the middle school is geographically at the south end of town, the high school is at the center of town, and of course, the elementaries are spread out all over town. If we had a campus structure, maybe doable, but geographically right now, that's, it would just be impossible financially.
And Marie?
I think people think, would think that would be a wonderful idea until all of those buses are on the road at the exact same time that they're trying to get to work.
That's also something we discussed, traffic patterns. And, you know, part of why Dr. Frazek had said earlier that, you know, if and when the school committee does approve this change, then Mr. Bishop's team goes back and, you know, fine-tunes it to take into consideration traffic patterns. What I was gonna ask, if somebody from the committee, maybe Mr. Riley or Ms. Coppola, if you just wanna talk briefly tonight a little bit more about the impact on elementary, which is thoroughly in their presentation, we record it and in the documents, but just for anybody who may be tuning in for the first time tonight, I know a question that I have received from families is, are we negatively impacting our elementary students in order to positively impact our secondary students? So if one of you could address that, please.
Well, we did do some research with the schools that currently are, have changed their programs. There's one down the Cape that did extensive research after they switched over. And they found that there was less, there were less discipline problems for children who came to school earlier, and that they felt that their attention was more prolonged in the morning and that they were more attentive in the early afternoon. So we, we looked at that as a positive. We do have teachers now that, you know, are doing Go Noodle at 2:00, just to keep kids awake and focused. And so we felt that, just that input that we receive from those towns on the progress that they made by having it switched over, that it was beneficial.
Yeah, and I think, on the other side also, you know, in the afternoons, like Nancy said, it does, not only, you know, shortens it on that end of our elementary students when we do start to get a little bit wiggly in seats, especially getting into April and May, and it's beautiful out, and kids are like, I just wanna go outside. But it also provides some opportunities in, in our schools to expand some after-school offerings with, with that potential. You know, getting out at 1:55 does potentially give extended day the ability, in a good way, to expand offerings at the local school. Our enrichment programs that we have traditionally held in, in our buildings, it's an opportunity for them to maybe do that, and also have karate at 5:00 at night, where those things aren't competing. And so kids might have a range of, of different activities that they're able to do that they wouldn't, they had to kind of pick and choose from before. So I agree, you know, the morning time, we don't see that being a huge issue for our kids in terms of, you know, taking from elementary to get to secondary. It hasn't been proven that that is the case, and we certainly don't think that that will be the case in Norwood.
Thank you, Mr. Riley and Ms. Coppola. Other questions or feedback from the school committee? Maya?
Um, so what would be the recommendation for the next step on this? What are you hoping that the committee would, would do next?
One of the task force members wanna, I'm trying to separate myself from task force member and chair facilitating the meeting.
You know, the, I mean, the next step would be for the committee to, you know, accept the recommendations of the task force and then determine when we would implement it, you know, in, you know, in my opinion. Basically, you know, and as I've said, there's no one of the task forces that have not heard me say this, but, you know, we need to give families some time to make adjustments and make plans, depending on when the committee wanted to make that decision. You know, one thought is, is this coming fall? And the other thought is the following fall. There are pros and cons to both. You know, the longer you prolong a change, I suppose, the, the longer you prolong the anxiety over the change. The other thing is that right now, we're hopeful on, on what next fall will look like. There still might be some variation of that. We are in uncharted water and uncharted times. So those are kind of the two things we're looking at. But I think families need at least six months, you know, to look at that. So that would be a March decision for a September of '21 input. If you wanted to go '18, you know, that's not necessarily off the table. I don't know if other members have a opinion on which would be better. I know the high school is looking at some other schedule changes, and so they, all the changes would happen at once.
Sure, I'm happy to jump in a little bit, Dr. Thompson. As he mentioned and I referenced earlier, the high school has been on what is now a year-long schedule study, researching the core needs that need to be addressed for our students in the high school. Those needs were identified. Those needs were identified in phase one. Phase two, we kind of, and we researched those needs to make sure they were grounded in research. Phase two, we researched what other schools had done to address their local needs. And phase three, we started to build out the structure of what possible schedules could look like. And we are currently in phase four where we are nearing a recommendation. So, you know, specifically for us, it is somewhat tied to the, to the start time. Our goal all along has been, we knew that at some point that may come. And so we wanted to make recommendations that were flexible enough to go with whatever the start time was, right? And that if it needed to be one way, one year and then slide forward another year, we could do that. One school of thought, and, you know, it's not necessarily right or wrong. There's many schools of thought, but one school of thought is like this year, we're already in a different schedule. So, you know, for us specifically at the high school, we had a schedule last year. We have a different schedule this year. For us to go back to this last year's schedule next year and then change it again the following year, you'd have, you know, students with three schedules in four years, you know, which is, could potentially be disruptive. It's at least not consistent. So that's one, you know, concern I have. It's not insurmountable, but we would look, the, the high school changes that they're looking to, to implement would be for the, this coming fall. You know, I don't know if that affects other levels or not, but there certainly have been a lot of changes this year. And then you could set yourself up for one more change or two more changes.
I think I'm piggybacking off that a little bit. What, I think hearing since a lot of this information has come out of the past couple of weeks, some staff who have, who have voiced, I think rightfully so, like, I don't know what my childcare is going to be like in the fall, you know? Are they going to be open or closed? And I think that added anxiety of, you know, okay, so we're gonna, our start time is going to be moved. And I don't know what my situation at my childcare provider is going to be. I don't think has, has helped the cause of like, yes, let's do this. I think people are more looking like, let's kind of get through and get things back to, yeah, I know my daycare is going to be open at seven and run until five and then I've got some wiggle room. I think that on the staff side would put people at ease, knowing that, you know, we're going to get them back through to their normal childcare schedule before putting this change in place. Because I do think some people now are saying, I just don't know what the future in the fall is going to look like for my own family. And so it's difficult to get behind, get behind this.
I think Joan had a question.
Yep. I don't have a question. I have a comment. If you were looking for thoughts from the committee about moving forward, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you hear me? Because my, I keep breaking up, which is why my video has been off a lot. Okay, good. So I, my thoughts kind of echo Mr. Riley's thoughts around the uncertainty. We've asked parents, teachers, staff, everybody in the districts to deal with a lot of uncertainty. And in the past year, if we recall, we were not getting good information very quickly from Desi, which then forced us to, I mean, that's an understatement, but, you know, and then that forced us to try to, you know, get, pump information out to parents who understandably had more questions about details that we didn't have answers to. And so because of that, I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to know what your thoughts are about a re-engagement with the community. I recognize that you did a lot of community outreach prior to the pandemic. But I feel like the world has been split into pandemic, like pre-pandemic and, and I guess during pandemic. I'm hoping we get to post pandemic. And so, like, I'm not sure if the, this is on the community's radar, quite frankly, anymore, even though it was pre-pandemic. And I, I echo Mr. Riley's thoughts around the fact that there might be a lot of anxiety about where they're at. So I would love to hear, I'd love to see us re-engage the community, even if it's in a short, direct fashion over the next month or something like that, specifically around their thoughts about if school start time changes, what types of issues does that bring up for them? So maybe not whether or not it's a good idea, but what are the things that we, that, that they need to consider that we need to consider around that?
Yeah, Joan, I'll just touch on that a little bit. I'm not against it all, what you're saying, but just to make sure everybody has the same context. So when we started this in 2017, it was Mara Smith and I that were on the subcommittee. And one of the very first things she and I did from May 2017 to November 2017 was hold community forums and, excuse me, get some feedback. And at that time, and if you look at the Google Drive that everybody on the committee has access to, you can go back to 2017 and see all those results. We didn't put those on the updated page for the community, but if you go to the updated page for the district, there is a link to take you back to the 2017 research. So it is still there. And you can see like the community results at that time. And at that time, it was pretty split with, I think it was like 14% who said they strongly agree, this absolutely needs to happen. And then another 14% strongly disagreed and said, absolutely do not do this. And then everybody else kind of fell in the middle. And then after that, when we, you know, created the task force, then the task force started to do more work. And then did, you know, a deeper dive into the surveys in the fall. And if you look at that parent survey, you know, as Dr. Frazek talked about, we surveyed all parents or they had the opportunity to provide responses pre-K through 12. And all of those results are on the website. And there's also what we did in the school committee pocket is pulled from that to make it easier for you to go through all the written responses. And there's 85 pages of written responses. I do know this happened pre-pandemic, but I just want to point out like the amount of work and detail and research that has gone into it because I do agree, a lot of people probably forgot we were talking about this before. But there's been a lot of rigorous tedious development time into this. And I don't know, and this is a question I'm now going to turn over to Dr. Thompson. Given everything else the district is currently navigating, everything we have to do at the middle school in the next six months, that involves a lot of community outreach and surveying and forums. Is there the capacity of the district to do another survey to parents? And/or if not, what capacity does the district have to re-engage the community?
We could do another survey out to parents. So, I mean, you put it together and, I mean, I don't know as if the district right now has the capacity to do the analysis of that beyond simple percentages. I mean, there is an awful lot going on with the building project. We're right in the middle of budget season. There is this small pandemic problem that keeps popping up every now and again. So it is, yeah, there isn't, there isn't much time in the, in the day to do much more than what is being done. I suppose maybe we could squeeze in a community forum question and answer sort of time after the survey or maybe do that, but that would be tough. You know, the next, the next two months are really focused on the, for me and several of the key people that are with us today around the educational plan. And we still have got to have that discussion of whether it's a five through eight or a six through eight middle school that we're going to design and ask the town for. So between now and May is super crazy, although in my four years, I don't think I've not had a crazy year, but that's okay. I'm getting used to it. But, so that, you know, that would be a challenge to, we could maybe do a survey and do one meeting, but to do a round the town, multiple meeting sort of thing would be, would be difficult. But I think, you know, I think surveying, hopefully people are, are, will soon become re-engaged after this conversation and, and, and listen to that. And I'm sure that, you know, again, it's one of those things is that, well, you know, it's a buzz, but when it gets to the front and makes a lot of noise, people tend, or is, or is eminent, that's when people tend to pay attention, unfortunately. So.
The one other, the one other thing I will say, Joan, we did as a task force already embed a community connection piece in the website. So if you go to the website after the recorded presentation, there is a contact form and it's very simple. It basically says, do you have any questions or feedback on the recommendations? And then the person's name and email. So far, only one person has written in and I already forwarded the questions to Dr. Gallagher because they were very specific. Cool. And he addressed many of them already in his presentation tonight. But what Mr. Riley and I had talked about as we, what's the word I'm looking for? Stay on top of, I can't think of the right verb. Stay on top of what's coming in from that contact form. We're probably going to see similar themes and questions come up. So then answer it, you know, publicly in an additional FAQ document. So we did have that piece already planned, but, you know, the task force could do more if that's what the committee is requesting.
Right. So, you know, if I could just follow up, follow up with, with one more thing. When you look at the research and, and what is best for our students, that really is not something that's debatable. What is debatable is how do we do what's best to our family, best for our students? And keep in mind, allowing families or enabling families to have what they need to either be timed. We have talked about adjusting extended day, you know, so instead of dropping off in the morning and possibly in the afternoon, it would probably be longer in the afternoon for your elementary folks. We are talking about having extended day at the elementary schools, which make it a little bit easier going forward as well. So we are going to be looking at those things to offer the services to help the families, but it is adjusting to that time, that, that time change. And that, you know, for some people that's easy and some, for some people, that's, that's a little bit more of a challenge, giving enough time.
Joan, do you have more thoughts?
I do. Let me be very clear. I'm not against shifting the school start times. My concern, and I said specifically, I'm not looking to engage the community in a beat about whether or not this is scientifically the best thing to do. But do we know if we'll be hybrid in the fall?
Right. That is a good point.
Do we know if we're going to be, have a remote learning academy in the fall? So do we know if we're going to absolutely be able to offer to extend a day to everybody who might need it in the mornings because the elementary school times will be shifting? Or in the afternoon? So those are the types of things that, quite frankly, I, I don't know how our administrative team is still standing, given the amount of stuff that they have, I, I almost said a bad word, the amount of things that they needed to deal with, you know, over the course of the past year. And so while I wholeheartedly believe in this, and if we were not coming out of a pandemic, or even if we were, you know, you know, three months further down the road where we said, you know, yes, all of our teachers have been vaccinated and yes, all of our most, most rural community members have been vaccinated. So there is no concern. So we are 90% sure we're going to be back full time in the fall. I would be like, yeah, let's do that. But because we still have questions about, is there going to be an RLA next year? Are we going to be going hybrid? How are we going to handle busing? If, you know, we, we go back with a three feet rule, but we can't make that rule happen on buses. That, I, I just feel like the, the, the bigger issues need to be sorted out and I would like to have our administrators' full attention on sorting those issues out until we get to the school start time. Now, if next month, you know, the, you know, the president says, we have figured out a way to mass produce all the vaccines. So by the end of May, everybody's going to be vaccinated. Like by all means, I'm happy to have a vote on when we should be implementing school start times. I, I just think that at this point, we need to keep our eye on that, that bigger issue, which unfortunately, at this point in our lives is, can we get our kids back to school full time?
Um, Joan, we did have that discussion in the task force. So I don't know if any of the task force members want to address that more specifically.
Teresa, do you mean kind of pushing off the change time or?
Yeah, because when we resumed, you know, one of the first things that we had said as a task force is, do we all still believe in this work? And everybody unanimously said yes. And then we had a pretty good conversation, which is in the meeting minutes that everybody has access to around what is the recommendation fall 2021? Or given everything that Joan very valuably just listed, did we feel as a task force that we wanted to shift it to fall of 2022?
Yeah, I think too, I think, you know, as Dave sort of said, the first piece is maybe asking the committee when they're ready to vote on either taking or not taking up the recommendation. And then maybe the second piece of that would be a vote on when to do it, whether it's for next fall and I think maybe I put up a big blank wall as to next fall because suddenly I'm like, oh my God, we might have hybrid and then remote learning next year. And I'm like, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna go crawl under my covers when we're done with this meeting. I didn't hear any of that. But no, I think those are all super valid points. And so maybe the committee take up, the second piece of discussion, should it be 2021? Should it be 2022? And that's why we very much did not put, we are recommending to do this at this time, knowing that there's definitely, there's a need to be flexible. And to, and I think Joan pointed out a number of the things that under my covers tonight in that. But so I think maybe it's kind of a two-pronged approach. Is one is, is the school committee ready to, you said it very well there, we started, the school, school committee willing, willing to dedicate themselves to making a change in start times? And then the second piece is when to make the change in start times?
And I'll turn it over to Maya because I know you have a question, but I just also want to let you know that on the long-term agenda at school committee, we do have the school start time task force coming back in March because the task force was not coming tonight, expecting all of this answered right away. And one of the discussions we had within the task force was, we were assuming there would be some additional things that the committee wanted the task force to look into. But Maya, I'll turn it over to you.
So that actually starts to address one of the things that I was just going to raise is that, you know, I think about, we have a practice that if we approve a new policy at a school committee meeting, we can't do that without, we have to do that over a course of at least two meetings, right? We, we tentatively approve it, but then we leave it open for a period of public comment. And then we do the final approval. And I think that this is a large enough issue and impacts enough people in the district that I do think it's appropriate to have a formal public comment period. I'm not asking the task force to go out and hold forums or things like that, but at least for the school committee to say, maybe we take a vote that we say, we, we are tentatively in favor of this, but, you know, please let us know, community, what you think, so that we do have that opportunity to get some feedback from the community before there's a final vote. I, overall, I think it's a great idea. I have always struggled with the fact that our middle school students are standing out in the dark, like long before the sunrise at certain times of year to wait for the bus. And I just don't think that that's good for anybody. And so I, I'm definitely in favor of this idea. I do wonder, you know, I can see both sides about like, let's just do it now because there's so much disruption already that we can just settle back into a new normal. And then I can also see the argument that there's so much unknown right now that it's difficult to make that decision right now. But I do think, the other thing is that I think a lot of the, the, the times that there were community forums and there were surveys and things like that, it was a more abstract idea. How would you feel about changing the time in general? And now there's a very specific plan, which I think allows people, might help some people feel more comfortable with it and might, for some people, raise more specific concerns. And so I do think that now that there's this, you know, specific plan, it'd be appropriate to have some period of public comment.
So I'll Bishop and then back to Joan.
The only comment I want to make, and again, I, I come from the private sector and I'm this little piece called transportation, but my, my background is aviation, 42 years. And if we wanted to develop a new route to Bermuda or some location, it all came about, we would pick a date, we picked, picked an implementation date. But it required a lot of training, a lot of planning and a lot of practiced implementation. And the thing was, is we might have a date. And maybe the date was pushed off a month, maybe it was pushed off six months. But that planning and everything that took place in between was really, really important. And I would just, I mean, from my perspective, I would rather, if we all agree that this is what we want to do, I would rather move forward with the idea that, okay, maybe we plan for this fall or maybe it is next fall. But let us get the planning done. Let me sit with Conley. Let us work out the bus structures. Let us tighten up these proposed times. And I know the principals have to worry about their bell times and everything else, but I think the planning's important. And, you know, in, in my mind, having an implementation, an implementation date that's sooner, that can be pushed off is better than having an implementation date that's later and delaying the planning. That's just where, for what it's worth, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Joan? Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Um, Joan?
So I'd like to make a motion that, um, the, I may get this wrong, so you might have to help me. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the policy subcommittee, can I make a motion for us or do I have to make a motion for the whole school committee? I got it, I got it. Okay.
You, you can't make a motion to give me more work.
I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee accept the recommendation of the school's start time task force, um, to take under consideration, uh, and direct the policy subcommittee to engage the community in feedback both around the proposed policy as well as an implementation timeline. With the goal of bringing a recommendation to the school committee in March for our long-term agenda, as it's listed on our long-term agenda.
Is there a reason you think it needs to come back to the policy subcommittee versus staying with the already developed task force?
Um, that was me recommending, that was me actually volunteering to take the lead to do the community outreach around the task force recommendation. So, um, if the task force would like to take that on, I am happy to say by all means, go ahead. But that was my attempt at sharing the workload.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think through, um, because the task force under Dr. Thompson has a different set of rules with it than a policy subcommittee under the school committee. Um, and I think the task force has been working really well together. If any of the members disagree, you can tell me. I think that everybody has been working really well together and just understands like all the work over the last three and a half years. And again, we, we do already have that contact form created, which I, I'm hearing everybody wants a little bit more than that. And just having been the person most consistently and detailed involved in this initiative in three and a half years, um, I've learned a lot, we have learned a lot. And, um, if we're gonna survey again, I would say we need to keep it shorter. Keep it based on here's the current plan and the questions that I'm hearing from Maya and Joan. But also at the parent level, it has to be divided up between elementary, middle and high school. It cannot be clustered together the way that our current one is. And if we do that, it's much easier, I believe, and Joe Kidd will correct me if I'm wrong. If we divide it up differently than we did, it'll be much easier to run a report and do the analysis. And it won't require as much of a lift as we've seen so far.
I am not wedded to doing that. So by all means, I will take your suggestion as a friendly amendment. To direct the, um, that the, to make a motion that the school committee directs the task force to collect, uh, more feedback from the, um, community regarding the school's start time in light of the current situation with the pandemic as well as a potential implementation timeline.
Did the motion, Joan, sorry, did it include approving the, the change? And then getting the additional feedback before deciding when, or could you just reword the beginning of it?
I was saying that we were accepting the feedback for the purposes of community, uh, accepting the most, uh, accepting the recommendation for the purposes of community feedback.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maya, for the discussion.
I just wanted to say that I think that, um, it just doesn't need to, I agree with you, this doesn't need to go to the policy subcommittee. But I also think that we can have two members of the school committee on a task force. So if Joan is interested in working on this, then, you know, it's possible that she could join the efforts of the, the task force and help support because as Dr. Thompson did say, there's already a lot on the plate with, um, the middle school work. And, and I wouldn't want to, um, risk that. That is vitally important to the district. And so, um, but I do, I do think that it's, you know, I'm in favor of this recommendation. I just would like to have some sort of, sort of formal public comment period. And, and I do understand that there is that comment information, you know, that comment link there. But I think that, um, now that we've talked about it again in a public meeting, then it will be in the Norwood record. And then it will be on Facebook and people will like start to reengage.
Further discussion on the motion. Call in favor? That was five zero. Okay. So, so I'm clear, Dr. Thompson's clear and the task force is clear. The task force will resume as we assume we are going to need to do and create short surveys. Joan, are you officially requesting that you want to join the task force?
I would be happy to join the task force for the purposes of community outreach and facilitating community input.
Okay. So we'll make sure that we get you on all the emails. Um, we'll set up a time to meet.
Feature the secret handshake, by the way.
I was gonna say, I have no doubt that you will be sure to copy me on all the emails going forward.
There may or may not be one that goes out right after this meeting, however. Does the committee feel that you want to, um, see the next round of surveys? Or do you trust the task force to create it and, and put it out?
Say that one more time, you glitched on me.
Oh, sorry. Does the committee feel comfortable with the task force creating and implementing and distributing the, um, next round of surveys? Or did the school committee want to see it before it goes out?
I almost think you can probably recycle what you've already sent out. Just I want to make sure that new people that may, might not have been in the school system before have a chance to speak on it.
I'm just not sure we want the exact same survey. Again, there's eighty-five pieces of written documentation already.
Right. So, I mean, I, 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 I think you guys are pros at it by this point.
Okay. So, um, task force will meet, will come up with a timeline. Joan and I can obviously keep the school committee informed of next steps. And then the task force will come back in March as we already planned for the long-term agenda. Does that feel like a comfortable timeline to everybody? Okay. Any further comments or questions on this topic tonight? All right. Well, thank you, everybody, um, for all of your work. We will be in touch soon and the work will continue. All right. So moving on to our next appearance, uh, with, uh, Ms. Segal Reese, who is here again to give us, um, our next round of the health update. Um, Ms. Reese, how are you?
Hi, good evening, everyone. That was really great to hear the update because I've lost track of where we're at. So it's great to see the progress on the school start times. Some great work been done there. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and Ms. Reese has been part of the task force in meetings as well, but obviously has been very busy with the pandemic since March. But thank you for your contributions to that work so far.
Um, as we fall into our usual pattern, um, I'd like to just share a little data, um, just to inform the committee on where we are, um, both with community. Um, and then a little bit on, on the school numbers too. And, uh, Dr. Thompson will chime in too with, um, some of the transitions with the tracing we've been doing with the schools. He's a little more up to date on the school cases now.
Are you gonna start with the, your slides and then I'll jump in? Or do you want me to talk about the schools first?
I, that works. You know, it takes a minute to get them up there. Um, before we jump into it, I just want to take a minute here to talk about, um, the vaccine rollout because it's so exciting. This week we are doing our first responders and that's been going really well. We're having a lot of lessons learned. And, um, it was great to have sort of a target population, a controlled population to be our first round. I'm really looking forward to opening into phase two, which we hope will be, you know, in, at some point in February. The timeline indicates here and that second bullet where we will, um, look to target, uh, school staff. K through twelve education. Um, I think we're very well poised to do that. We offer flu clinics to all the schools every year. So we build upon that model, a little more complicated with the COVID vaccine, but, um, I think it's something we could do very quickly and efficiently to get the school staff vaccinated. So we are starting the planning process with that. Meeting with the, uh, the school nurses and the superintendent in his office to, to lay out how that would work. Um, so this week's report encompasses December twenty-seventh through the ninth, so last Saturday. Um, increase, small increase in the, um, average daily case count per hundred thousand. You'll see the rate went up, um, about ten points. That encompasses the two, two hundred and ninety-one cases over that two-week period. The percent positive actually came down a little, which is great. So even though we are seeing more cases, the testing is keeping up, in fact, improving from the previous week. As far as how much we're testing. So we know testing is a really important tool we have, um, to control the spread. And we don't want to see, you know, if we saw our rates stand still, but our percent positive go high, that would be a really bad indication. So seeing those moving together is good. And even if percent positive continues to drop, that, that's a, a good thing. Obviously, we want both numbers to drop as soon as possible, but, um, we have been pretty level. Like I said, just, uh, there was an increase over last week. Where you can see we were coming down for two straight weeks in a row, um, which was exciting, but then a little increase this week, not unexpected. We've kind of thought we'd see the holiday spike around this week. Um, I think we need to see another two weeks to see if that increase is going to continue or level off like it did over, um, really the last month before this report. And then, um, just to break down the age breakdown, we continue, um, to not see cases in those older ages, which is fantastic. Because we know that's much higher risk in those, um, you know, seventy and eighty age range. We do continue to see, um, our cases mainly twenty, thirty, forty, fifty-year-olds. It does sort of fluctuate in, you know, of who tops the chart every week, but it does tend to be the higher numbers in those age groups. Continue to see the large span though, the range of ages from four months to ninety-four in this week's report. Of those two hundred and ninety-one cases in the two-week report, twenty-six of them were, um, either staff or students at the schools. And these are, these would be Norwood residents. So any staff that's not Norwood resident wouldn't be counted in that number. I'm pretty sure on that. So, um, so it's only nine percent of the total cases. So a very small percentage of the cases are of people in school. And we continue to see that those cases are really come from, um, they're getting it from their households, which we've talked about a lot here. Is that most of our clusters are household clusters. Here we go. Um, so good and bad news as usual, um, percent positive down, rate a little bit up, but that we've been pretty level for a couple of weeks now. No dramatic increases.
That's good. Are there questions or comments from the, um, committee on the statistics so far from Ms. Reese? Dr. Thompson, did you want to talk more about what, um, is happening within schools?
Yeah. So, um, basically right before vacation, during vacation and after immediately following vacation, we were seeing huge numbers come through our schools. This past week, which is good news, we have not, uh, we've only had, and only is a relative term. But we've only had five cases of students at the, uh, high school and those have been home contractions. We've had one at the middle school and we've had five total at all five elementary schools. So that is much lower. That was our hope going through. We were very nervous, um, prior to the, uh, the break and that first week of the break that we were going to have a large problem. As the committee knows, um, what we did at that point is that we changed our practice schedule. We reiterated keeping our teams separate. Um, and because we were concerned about having a spike when we returned or just as we returned, we decided to hold off on bringing back home spectators. So, um, with these numbers, I feel confident that we can, um, have spectators start this weekend. I am going to try, uh, speak with Mr. Longley and, and Mr. Galligan to see, make sure there's not something with the team or something that has happened between, uh, this morning and tomorrow morning. But other than that, we kind of hope that, uh, we'll be able to undo our pause on, on home spectators. We still do not allow, or the league is not allowing out-of-town spectators. But we still are broadcasting those from those venues as well. So good news on the school front. Really have to, to stress, we really need to buckle down and kind of stay with our households. If we're, if we're going out, we're outdoors and we're far away from each other. I think at this point and where the numbers keep kind of climbing every day and concerned about, you know, that there, those variants that are more contagious coming forward that, you know, really kind of look at it, that everybody is kind of infectious. So, um, you know, it's, you know, it, it, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work together if we're gonna, we're gonna keep this, this bus rolling. So.
Question from the committee? Maya?
Uh, Dr. Thompson, um, at our last regular meeting back on December sixteenth, uh, Dr. Galligan had expressed concern that the high school was close to a point where it was going to have to pivot to all remote due to staffing difficulties and particular number of staff in quarantine. Um, has that settled down a little bit?
That, that has settled down. We did see, uh, people contract over, over the vacation. And we have not had new cases since we've returned. So that is, you know, was another concern. That number hopefully is, is, is stopping going forward. So. Some of the people who were quarantined or who were sick are starting to return. So we're seen to be coming back, back around on that as well. So that is good news.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and, and I'll be honest, and I'll, I'll talk just in general terms, but there's a couple of staff members that I was concerned about. That seem to be coming around at this point in time. And that's something that people need to realize. It's not just about, oh, the kids don't get sick or the kid. The students are, are working with adults, um, and adults can get rather sick. We just lost one of our police officers in the town that I live in. So we do not want to have any of that repeating anywhere else in, in Norwood or anywhere else in general. And we all need to come together to do that.
Um, Dr. Thompson, um, you've just addressed, you know, the spectator policy. And under your update, we had it listed at winter athletics, which is really to talk about the spectator policy. And, um, we don't have to get into it, you know, in full detail here. But, um, you know, we did hear from a number of community members over the last week in regards to that decision. And, um, you know, just seeking information about why the decision was made and who made it and who should make it. So I, I just want to share, you know, with the full, you know, community that if an email comes into the full school committee, our policy is that at the chair, currently myself, will respond on behalf of the committee. And it's really important for people to understand that open meeting law does apply to our electronic correspondence. So if the entire school committee is on an email address, um, one email, um, we cannot debate. We cannot share our personal opinions or thoughts on a situation. We can always, um, provide you facts and data. Um, you know, as chair, I'll always send you links to things to look at or catch you up on what had happened at previous meetings. But anything that would be on an agenda going forward that the committee might deliberate, um, cannot be discussed as a committee, um, over email, on social media or in any forum outside of a public posted meeting. So just important for the community to understand that. And I think it's also important for the community to know that not everything within the district falls under the purview of the school committee. Some things are solely under Dr. Thompson. Um, some things are solely under the school committee. Some things, many things is gray and a combination of both of us. But sometimes operational administrative decisions, um, do not fall under the purview of the school committee. Athletics falls under the committee in terms of determining what athletics will run, which athletics will be budgeted for. But policies as related to spectators, um, does not fall under the school committee. Um, and Dr. Thompson made the decision to previously stop home spectators. And as he just shared, um, will most likely reverse that decision after he talks with Dr. Galligan and Mr. Longley tomorrow. He's made these decisions in consultation with Ms. Reese, um, but they are the appropriate people to make these decisions, not the school committee.
Right. You know, and I think it, I, I think it needs to be said at this point in time that it was not an intention to disenfranchise parents. Uh, we've made a tremendous effort with NCM to make sure every single game has been, uh, has been broadcast and streamed. And, you know, they do not only a great job, they do, they do pretty much a, a professional job, uh, when they do that. It, it's very well done and, and compliments to them. And I jokingly say that Norwood has the world's greatest light department, cable company, DPW. It's amazing. So, uh, we are, we are very lucky with that. But my priority at that point in time, looking at those numbers, we had two choices. Either we could be creative and see if we could find a way to break the cycle, or we could have paused sports and gone remote. And I'm prioritizing having our students come into class and I am prioritizing having our athletes on the field or on the ice. Those are the first two priorities. Not to be mean as a parent of an athlete myself, but that is not a number one priority. Those are the first two priorities. Those are who I am looking out for. I want to keep this going as long as possible. I do not want to flip to remote. We will do so. And in some cases I will be cautious to make sure that happens. You can disagree with, um, my decision, but my decisions that, that I make, and there are a lot of difficult ones. And there's a lot more difficult ones this year than there had been in my previous thirty years, some in thirty-one years of. Thirty years, some thirty-one years of, of, of education at this point in time. This is, this is racking them up, but my decisions are made in what's in the best interest of my students. And that has been a stalwart in my career and that will continue to be my focus. So you might not like the decision, but hopefully you can understand from where it comes.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, um, while we still have mysteries, oh, sorry, go ahead, Maya.
Oh, I just wanted to address open meeting law, but if you want to talk to Miss Reese, let's do that, do that, and I just want to go back to one thing on the open meeting law.
Well, I was actually gonna ask you a question on the, the pool testing, so why don't you go back to the open meeting law?
Okay.
And we'll move on.
I, I just want to, um, make everyone aware that, um, or remind people that in twenty sixteen, this committee was cited by the Attorney General's Office. For failure to comply with the open meeting law and we're required to go through additional training and, and every school committee member when they come on. They go through a special training that includes information on open meeting law. And so, open meeting law does not, it's not something, like individual people in the community cannot violate open meeting law. It's only elected officials that it applies to. Individual members of the committee, of the community can absolutely share their thoughts with us. If they're talking to an individual school committee member, they can absolutely ask us for our thoughts and opinions. But even if we do something like a quick straw poll by an email. And say, hey, what does everybody think, can we do this, that is absolutely positively considered deliberation under open meeting law. I know it doesn't sound like that's a deliberation, but, um, they take a very broad view of the word deliberation, so, um. And then the other thing is that I think another thing people don't always understand about the role of the school committee and, and they talk about this in some of the school committee trainings is that. You know, on the finance commission, there are finance commissioners, like it sounds like they have their own role, but we're just school committee members. We have no authority outside of a vote of the committee. And that includes the chair, in many ways they describe the chair as the servant of the committee, not the leader of the committee. So the chair has no more authority to make decisions than any individual school committee member. And we can only make decisions in a public meeting like this that has been properly noticed and, you know, po- posted and all of those things that we need to do. So, um, obviously I think this is an important role and I've spent a lot of time on it, but I need people to understand that it's a very, um, limited role. In terms of some of the things that we can do, and that's really important, it, it should be that way because. A school district needs to operate in a way that people can make decisions in real time, it can't operate with, you know, five. Volunteer elected officials who meet every two weeks making decisions about the, the schools. That's all.
Thank you, Maya, I know we had talked as a committee quite a while ago, probably two years ago about, um, realizing the community could use some education on our roles and then just because. I think we're in the middle of the override at that time, um, we never got to that point, so I don't think now is the time, but. At some point we may want to put together a very brief, um, just education, um, so everybody is aware and. Respectful of rules and what we can and cannot do. Um, but, uh, while we still have mysteries and I don't want to keep her too long tonight, um, I was wondering, um, if you and Dr. Thompson wanted to talk a little bit more. About the statewide pooled testing, um, that we're just really starting to learn more about in the last forty-eight hours from D E S I. Since that is a decision that ultimately our community and our district together will have to make if we're doing. Um, and I did share at the committee, the slides from the D E S I webinar, the Dr. Thompson attended, that is linked in our packet as well. But Thompson or Miss Reese, would you like to give a quick overview of? This initiative?
You wanna, you want to start talking about what it is and then I'll start talking about the, the, what do you want, what do you want, what do you want to? Want to help me with my, with my degree in public health and I can talk about it first, you tell me.
I'm definitely ready to give you one already, so. Yeah, pool, pool testing is just like what it sounds like, they pull a bunch of samples together and they test the batch, if the, any, if the pool is positive, then they go back and in this case. They would test with the, uh, antigen test, so the pool testing is a P C R testing and it's just a way to test, um, large amounts of people in a more efficient way. It's done usually in, in surveillance, obviously you're not going to test someone that's symptomatic or exposed that way. But if you're looking to do, um, surveillance or routine testing of a population, you can do it in, in a pooled fashion and you can pull. You know, various numbers of, of samples together. And then I think I'll actually defer to Dr. Thompson for the details on what, um, the state is looking with schools.
Yeah, so the state is, the, the state is offering to fund a six-week trial of pool testing. And we can sign on to that in many different forms, which is what I'm trying to figure out, uh, we could, well, we would actually need. To ask for additional staffing, uh, from this source in order to do the actual testing and. Actually have to take the samples to the lab and all sorts of things and the whole setting it up a- and logistics. But basically once a week, those that are in person, either part-time, hybrid or full-time, uh, would be, uh, tested and you can set that up where it's a certain school. Certain population theoretically, um, but we, you know, and again, i- i- in, you know, in Norwood, we have. We are working closely with the Board of Health and our school nurses are, are, are doing the contact tracing for the school cases. Uh, and the challenge with that, plus taking care of the kids' health, plus monitoring kids and making sure we don't have. Kids with symptoms coming in and all that other sort of thing, they're pretty stretched beyond the limit at this point in time. Uh, as I've, as I've communicated with you and just a quick thank you to them for all that they are doing to keep. Not only are, are kids and our staff safe, but through their work basically helping keeping the community safe, so. If you, if you see one of the school nurses, uh, give them, well, not a pat in the back because we don't want to get that close, but give them a thumbs up and a big smile or a thank you please. So this is a, this is one of the operational difficulties that, that we would have doing this, but we can. Get help through this for six weeks, after that, we would have to pay for it. And this is where the rubber hits the road, um, it is, uh, five dollars a swab, so it's theoretically five dollars a student staff member per week. So depending, and again, hot, you know, the, those that are, are, are full remote would not be part of this per se, but, um. You know, you would be able, you know, we, you know, it's five dollars a swab, so to do the whole district, it's going to be somewhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a week. So we do have the second stimulus money coming, but, you know. Can we, can we really do the entire week, the, you know, the entire school system plus the logistics? You know, um, and be able to, and be able to burden that cost going forward and still be able to carry that money into the next year, because I think we're going to need that for. You know, I do not anticipate that we will totally be, no, no longer need masks and sanitizer and. Sprays and all the other stuff that we've had to keep up the P P E and all that stuff we've had to keep up, all of those costs are going to keep going forward. So this is, this is the question, I have an email into the state about can I do, do I have to do a school or can I do the staff in a few schools? Um, I think at this point, personally, I'm leaning towards, um. Trying it in kind of a subsection of our, our system that'll give us some information about how it works. At the end of this six weeks, there's going to be a statewide contract that the district can sign on to. They're estimating it's five dollars per swab, uh, at this point in time. That might come down, um, we, you know, and in my conversation with, with Mrs. Reese, uh, this afternoon, she's, well. No, it's six weeks, you don't know what's going to change between now and then, that's a very good point, that's a very good thought, but to not. Get in, you know, we could wait six weeks, but why not have the free trial period first? So that's kind of where we are again, another conundrum, uh, I did email, uh, the D E S E right after the, um. The webinar yesterday at eleven o'clock, um, I just checked my email, it is still, I still don't have an answer, they want me to, uh, to sign up by Friday, I'm hoping I'll get an answer by Friday, because then I can figure out where. We would, we would kind of start on that as. Our initial explosion up at the high school, and again, those kids are more independent, going more places. Possibly, you know, more adult-like, might be more of a problem, but you could also make an argument for. You know, kindergarteners too, so, um, trying to get some information that to figure out where to, where to start, but my. Thought is, is that we should probably do the six months, the six month, I wish it was six months, the six-week trial. And see where, uh, that gets us, get, get us some, gets us some experience with the system, there is a computer software involved. Learn from the people who are doing it, how to set it up, kind of figure out what exactly help, what help we would need. What are the different ways we could fill that gap, because we would need to fill the gap, like, I can't. The nurses already split themselves two and three ways, I can't ask for four and five. In order to, and I honestly, i- i- it is, it is a surveillance and, and, and mitigation strategy, one of the, uh, towns who have been doing this. As a pilot for the last month and a half have found thirty-five asympta- asymptomatic cases. So it does, it does help keep those numbers down, so.
And Dr. Thompson, you have to let them know by Friday, as you said, of our initial interest.
Right.
Then there are some prerequisites that they went over in that webinar, some of it includes like. They're very clear on the P P E that you need, so we would obviously need to make sure that we have all the P P E to do this additional work. But it's a quick turnaround in when the six-week launch starts, um, they have said like end of January, early February. But they haven't yet released like their official guidelines. So they, they want commitments and decisions before they tell you absolutely everything that's going to be involved.
I mean, it is a initial interest, you're, I mean, you're not, they're not taking you away and locking you into a basement and, you know, making you say yes repeatedly, so you could. I mean, if, if the guidelines come out and it's just not doable, we could theoretically say no, but yeah.
Uh, Joan?
I just, I have a question about funding after the six-week trial, um. You had said that there's a second round of funding coming for COVID, is that? Do we definitively know the total that we're getting?
We have a range of what we're getting.
Okay.
Do you want me to share that with you now, because that's.
No, 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 I have, I have, I have.
That's a part I got nothing to talk about.
No, I have two, no, I have, I have a question then. Can any of that range be used retroactively or to pay current? Teachers salaries or those types of things, so we have a big R L A, right, like we did, we're the Remote Learning Academy, right? Where we have live teacher instruction, but that came at a cost that we had to go to town meeting for. Is any, can we use any of that money that's coming in the second round of funding to cover some of those salary expenses?
We could, yes, theoretically, we, we, we don't have, we don't have any real guidance on that, except it's going to mirror the first one, I, I know, shocking. It's going to mirror the first one, it's going to be three-point-six to three-point-eight times what the first one was, which puts us in the range. Of, uh, one million to one-point-two million. Um, and we can use that money through the fall of twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's a year and six months-ish. And as we don't know what we will need.
Then, okay, so with, with those answers, that helps me ask the question then of what is, what is the real? What is the, the concrete benefit that the schools get out of pooled testing? So I understand that we would catch asymptomatic cases, but what does that then translate into, does that mean that we are more likely to be able to bring more of our students back full-time? Like, does, does, does engaging in pool testing equal? Better education for our students, not to dis, not to say that pool testing for the public health isn't a good thing, but. We spent, coincidentally, how much did we spend on remote learning teachers? It was very much in that ballpark, and so I want to know if there's a, a, a good, concrete, tangible education benefit for our students for doing the, the pool testing.
Sorry, I, I haven't taken that course i- i- in my public health, um, program, so I'll, I'll have to defer to the public.
Just ask the state, they know, right?
Well, I, I think actually we are going to give you that honor degree, because you said it, it's, it's one more mitigation strategy. It's one more factor that can reduce the risk, um, it's just another tool in the toolbox, can you, um, you know, remove, uh. A, a different factor, could that take the place, I mean, you can't take, you know, it's not one equals one, but if you have routine testing. You know, you're more likely to get cases, again, not perfect, it's just a snapshot in that moment, are you positive? You could, you know, come down with it the next day or get exposed the next day, so that's why it's kind of done on a weekly basis. You will catch more cases sooner, so that reduces the risk, um, but again, it's, it's not perfect. So you might be able to do more riskier activities, you know. Bring more kids in, reduce the six feet, you know, things like that, but. Understanding, I, I keep saying it, there's no such thing as zero risk, it's just one more tool to reduce the risk a little.
Like, is this on par in terms of effectiveness with, I know, I'm, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but. We don't know if we're going to have a remote learning academy for next fall, right, like. And so that money is, is, well, it sounds like a lot of money for the funding, it's actually not a lot of funny money. Money when you're talking about continuing to have to provide it an R L A or continuing to have to try to figure out busing. Um, and so like, is it, is it, I'm trying to get a range of the impact, right, so wearing masks. Allows us to have even a hybrid, right, like, that's great bang for our buck, because how much do masks cost, right, like, nothing, because we've actually passed that risk, that cost on families. But even if we were to assume that cost, right, it's a, it's a low cost, it's not twenty-five thousand dollars per month. So, and we got a huge bang out of that, I'm trying to kind of get a, can you give me a range of effectiveness, is, is it as effective as everybody wearing masks? Or is it like extending the effectiveness from staying six feet away to twelve feet away, right, like, you don't get much bang for that buck, right?
Uh, uh, it probably can't give you an exact measurement like that, but what I can say is, if I had a choice of where to put my resources, I'm focusing on vaccination. Which is hopefully going to be happening around the same time, so again, talking about limited resources. I think the testing, when it's paid for, obviously is a little bit of a no-brainer, but when we're talking about testing the whole district at twenty-five thousand dollars a week, I mean, that's a, that's a financial decision for, not for me to make, for sure. I don't think it's as much bang for your buck, um, I think we, our effort should be in, um, vaccinating at that point. We, we need to bring in vaccinated or things like that, I, and I, and I think we can, we might not need that, where that, we can do that more efficiently and at less cost, but that's where you're going to get. A lot more protection.
So how do we get though, how do we get to the front of the line for those?
I'm working on it, I really want to do it. You don't have, it, it's not all or nothing, so, um, I think, I, I actually, um, Teresa, I think you mentioned it, you know, we do the six-week of testing and we see where, maybe where it has the biggest impact, you know, we're. We're guessing it's going to be the high school, because that's where we're probably seeing the most cases for various reasons. You know, so maybe it's a more targeted testing approach after the six weeks, so, um. You know, that, it all gets into those awful judgment calls we have to make about what's the best way forward balancing all the, the factors. So sorry, I can't say, you tested it and you know, reduced your risk by ten percent, I can't say that.
Yeah, well, um, I was in a meeting, and the other, Sigal and Dave and, um, Jill Driscoll, the head nurse, to start talking about this, and, and that's what Sigal's referencing, um, in that meeting, I was saying that. You know, if this is funded for six weeks and if there is a way that we can test district-wide. It just gives us more data, because right now in this whole pandemic, there's a lot we don't know, I mean, that's just the, the reality, we know more now than we did in March of last year. But there's still a lot we don't know, and, um, you know, one of the, the questions that's still out there and. Different articles say different things is around asymptomatic young children, like, how many asymptomatic elementary kids are out there? And not only are they out there, but how, how high is that viral load, because the higher your viral load, the more likely you are to transmit. And we, we don't know right now, so with the state program in six weeks, it could help provide us more of an insight. Of what is really going on in our schools and therefore our community. It could, or it could not reinforce that the way we contact tracing is working, or maybe it's an eye-opening and we need to re-approach that. So solely just from like a public health perspective, I think there's so much potential and research and things to be gained from at least trying. In the first six weeks. But then when I have to step back into, you know, my school committee role and think about everything else educationally and logistically for the district. It's a heavy lift, um, and, you know, I listened, I, I wasn't able to attend the webinar live, but I did listen to it last night and it was an hour and a half long. And, um, three districts who have been doing testing on their own, not through the state initiative, but on their own, uh, since the fall. Talked through their lessons learned and all three of those districts. Talked about how important it is to have the capacity and, um. One district was just doing high school and there was about nine hundred high school students that they were doing, so high school students and staff. Um, the other two districts, uh, were doing district-wide, one pre-K through twelve and the other K through twelve. Um, one was a district of about four. Um, one was a district of about four thousand students, the other was a district of about twenty-five hundred students. So just to give you a sense of like the magnitude of what they're doing. Um, and they all had great lessons learned, like Dr. Thompson mentioned earlier. Um, the one district was able to identify thirty-five asymptomatic cases. Within their high school in a month. That they probably otherwise wouldn't have known existed. And then, you know, you quarantine and trace and, and do all your preventative measures from there. But the state comes in with the PCR pool testing. They help you a lot with that, but then if your pool becomes positive, if your pool test results are positive. Then you have to be ready to do the antigen testing at the individual level. And then this is where fiscally, logistically, I'm really not sure how Norwood does it. Um, one of the districts that spoke on the webinar contracted with Tufts University and with other colleges. And have all student nurses volunteering to do this testing. Another district hired retired nurses, so they took on that fiscal cost to run this additional testing. And then another district increased their stipend, their stipends for nursing. So there's, there's a lot to figure out. Can we do it? And I know the first step is just in submitting that initial, yes, we want to know more, which Dave, you are doing, Dr. Thompson, you are doing, right, by Friday?
Doesn't hurt to ask, right? Much? Doesn't hurt much.
So if they're planning to launch this end of January, early February, not yet released the guidelines, have not yet told the exact date. We aren't scheduled to meet again until the twenty-seventh, I think. Um, does a decision have to be made by the school committee to participate? Or is that like the first six weeks? Is that a school committee decision or is that Dr. Thompson's the gall decision?
Um, I, I mean, it, it's, it, it's not gonna impact. The budget, the way I'm thinking about it at this point, so it'll just be signing up for a free trial.
Don't we have to pay for the labor though? Right? Like, I feel like the deal that I thought we saw was. They'll give us the supplies, but we have to pay for the labor even during the free trial. Is that, is that not right?
That, yeah, that, that you can ask for the labor. In the free trials, what I was told.
Okay, great.
They had recommended and Russell Johnson had said the expectation was districts can do this within their own staffing. But you can request help if you need it. That is how he phrased it. I.
Exactly, so.
Pretty creative wordsmithing there.
Right, so these, and again, some of these people are, that are making those recommendations have never worked in the district, so there you go. But we won't talk about that.
So there are other questions or feedback at this time for um, Dr. Thompson and Ms. Reese around the pool testing as they continue to explore that? Okay, any other health updates, Ms. Reese, that you want to share with us tonight?
No, just, um, I, I just want to say quickly for, for the committee and for the public. Um, to keep an ear out, keep an eye out on the state website. Things are changing a lot with the vaccine rollout. And um, stay aware, sign up for the SWIFT reach, the uh, reverse call system that the town has on the town website. Um, as we do, hopefully in the spring and the summer have large public clinics, we will be using that system to notify residents. But definitely, um, look on the state website. We don't know anything beyond what's on the state website.
Thank you. All right, so moving along, um, Dr. Thompson, I know we already stole your thunder out of some of your super.
That's all right. I'll let Dr. Wyatt uh, have some, have some screen time. He's very excited. He's gonna, he's gonna curriculum us.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, Dr. Wyatt.
So I, there's a link to um, what I'm gonna present here, our curriculum review. So I wanted to take the opportunity just to, you know, update you on our curriculum renewal cycle and, and the budgeting for that. Um, so I will present this so that the public can see it as well. To a tab here. Okay, so hopefully everyone can see this. Yes, I can't see you because I'm doing the whole tab, so speak up, speak up if you can't see anything. Um, so what, I'll, I've got three tabs at the bottom here, you know, the, what you see in front of you is the first one and then. Um, I'll speak to this. This is just sort of a budget breakout. And then this is sort of the summary of the, the more colorful chart. So for two thousand twenty and twenty-one, this year, this is sort of where we are due to COVID, right? And so we had to do some changes, make some changes, um, moving the elementary history and social studies. Back, uh, we weren't able to find, I think I'd mentioned this to you all before earlier, we weren't able to find a lot of fully developed programs. Um, at the end of last year, we were hoping to really finish that off this year and purchase this year, which is what you see here in the K-five history social studies. But that, that's been put on hold. And so that gets bumped to the following year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Where I hope to sort of pick up where we left off, um, touch base. We are piloting um. McGraw-Hill Impact Social Studies um, with some staff. Um, you could see that right up here. Can you see my pointer? Is that?
We can.
Okay, good. So I'm gonna try to follow with my pointer here. Uh, so we are getting some feedback on this. This is a program that I have high hopes for. It's a well-developed, it's the only well-developed kind of uh, elementary history, social science program we could identify. And um, that may pan out, so I'm hoping it will and people will get behind it and we can purchase that with um, FY twenty-two. Dollars. Excuse me, um, what came on, on the radar uh, was our K-five math um, renewal. So this is something that um, I'm gonna switch to the other tab here. It's a cost of a hundred and eighty-seven, roughly a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, as you know, we, we adopted a new program six years ago, so that is coming to an end. And. And we will need, I would like to purchase that. A- as soon as possible. So Karen and I and Dave have talked about this, this. We had three hundred thousand for this year for textbooks, but given all the COVID and everything else, we. You, you may recall reducing that amount to uh, you know, by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for other purposes. So I'm trying to, to get a sense from Karen and hopefully, um, you know. Dave as well, as, if we can recover some of that money enough to pay for the um, K-five math. Uh, with FY twenty-one dollars, I would love to do that. Otherwise, it's gonna bollocks things up in FY twenty-two. Um, so that's my ask, if you will, that we try to find a way to purchase that program. Um, with FY twenty-one dollars. Somehow, we're not really gonna use the program, you know, officially until FY twenty-two, so there's an, you know, an auditing jam up there. But I think maybe with some uh, creative work, we might be able to, to figure that out. I don't know, Karen, you can jump in and. And say more about that, but um, we, we were, we were trying to find a, a hole for the donut, if you will. Otherwise, it gets bumped into FY twenty-two when we were gonna really, hopefully um. Uh, do some six-twelve science and technology engineering purchasing. Paul Betts is working on that with the uh, groups of his teachers at the middle and high school. And hopefully he will have a figure for me, you know, in the next month or so. For the six-twelve science. The, we bumped the history. Um, and I'm, I'm estimating that to be around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars if that actually. If we get consensus on that and if, if we wanna move forward with that, which is a need, you know. So you can see how we're getting jammed up here potentially in FY twenty-two unless we can figure out a way to get this. Uh, Envision's math um, purchased with other funds, you know, other than FY twenty-two funds. Either that or we may have to, you know, ask for a little bit larger amount here, given all the shuffling. That we've had to do for, you know, uh, FY twenty-two. We could up there three hundred thousand, for instance, in the budget.
I think I shared it to comment.
Yeah, okay, Karen, jump in, please.
Uh, just one of the things we had discussed was, um, well, because you're not using that, those textbooks until the following year. I, I think it's kind of difficult to purchase it this year. So one of the thoughts we um, had talked about was. Um, you can prepay your um, out-of-district tuition three months in advance. So you might be able to pay your three months in advance for your out-of-district tuition. Uh, get your PEO ready for July first for this curriculum. And then um, that's kind of swapping um, the FY twenty-two funds you're gonna prepay in, in twenty-one. So that gives you money to pay for this curriculum in twenty-two, when is the year you really should be expending it. Because you're not using it until twenty-two. So that was one of the things we thought about.
Right, thank you. I'd forgotten that. Yeah, so I'm, I'm typing that right in here.
Gonna hold you to it, Karen.
We uh, that, that was the, the creative solution, right? So um, that's kind of the, the, the status of where we are here. Um, going back to this slide, um. You could see the six-twelve piece. The K-five science, right now we're piloting uh, mystery science with um. Um, our kids and that, that's a very good program, but it's not a, a full. Um, a fully developed program. In other words, we would need to, to supplement that with something else or. Or um, use this as a, as a sort of supplement, but um, people are really enjoying that, so. I, what I would like to do is, and the other thing I, I put in here, and you'll be hearing more about this, and Dave, I need to catch up with you on this too. We want to basically refine our elementary science model. Right now, as you know, we've got two science teachers and they are advocating for a shift of that model. So that um, we can have more of a curriculum coordinator, coach kind of um, set up going. And have the, our classroom teachers really take over the, the science teaching. As is the case in most other districts. So that'll take some, some uh, long-range planning. Some staffing considerations and also some professional development considerations to make sure our staff are ready for that. So that's really, I'm looking at the FY twenty-one, twenty-two year to um, to kind of do that work. You know, but that's, that's sort of an evolving um, conversation. I, I spoke with the elementary principals about that and have some um, information to share with Dave about that, but. So that's kind of where we are. And then we've got the other things sort of planned out here. If we look at, I won't go over that because, you know, it's, it's a little too far out for us right now, but. Um, I'm gonna stop presenting here. And be happy to take some questions, get back to my Zoom, there we are. So I'm happy to take any questions about that. But you'll be hearing more about this, I think, as we present our budget. You know, in terms of what we, we feel we need for FY twenty-two and, and what we are gonna target.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Are there any questions or feedback from the committee at this time on the curriculum timeline?
Okay, thank you, yep. Yeah, we'll, we'll keep working it.
So Dr. Thompson, do you have other areas under your report that we didn't already?
Well, the only, the only other thing, and it kind of goes back to the, to um, you know, the, the case numbers and that sort of thing. But again, reminding everyone to keep a distance, stay in, you know, your household groups. If you're on an athletic team, that's the pod, that's who you socialize with, limit all interactions, everybody else. It's the, the, unfortunately, the virus is more prevalent and easier to uh, to come across. And if we're not careful and taking our precautions, washing hands, wearing masks, staying more than six feet away. Not riding in cars with, with uh, people, not in our immediate household. If we are, we're wearing masks and not sitting right next to them. All of those sorts of things, um, you know, we can, we can keep this uh, this going as long as possible. Um, you know, you have seen at this point, other communities stopping sports, going remote. Um, people having social gatherings, which are not what, you know, if you wanna hang out twelve feet apart outside, then that's a different story. Than being inside uh, doing something. You know, so just kind of think and plan ahead and, and try to keep the distance. We can keep you coming to school, keep you playing on your sports teams. Uh, and keep our community safe, so that's my, my last bit, so thank you.
Good afternoon, Thompson. Uh, so at this time, um, we're gonna shift to budget. Only thing on the agenda related to budget is the budget subcommittee update. Uh, Maya, did you want to give a quick update on our work?
Sorry, took a minute to unmute. Um, I, we. Uh, approved minutes from several meetings at our last budget subcommittee meeting back in December. So um, I did um, share those with um. With Dr. Thompson and Priscilla Ried, and so I believe that those are all in the um, folder so that you can all view those now. Uh, and we have a budget subcommittee meeting coming up for Friday, January twenty-second at one PM. At that time, we'll be starting to talk about some of the work um, for creating the FY twenty-two budget. Um, I did wanna let everybody know that, you know, the state is starting their budget process. Um, the governor's budget is due January twenty-seventh um, for next year. And um, I believe that um, this week, the, the state legislature is supposed to be deciding. On the revenue estimate to be used for um, for next year's budget. So um. The, the revenues from the last six months for the state had actually been a little bit higher than they were for that same period the year before. But at this point, they're expecting that the total revenues for FY twenty-one will be about three point nine percent below what they were for FY twenty. So we'll see, at least that's what I'm finding in newspapers and things like that. So we'll see what we get um, in the way of a, the consensus revenue number and then what the budget, this, the um. Governor's budget looks like in two weeks.
Thank you, Maya. Any questions from the committee for the budget subcommittee that you want us to review at our next meeting? Okay, um, and I know Ms. Sheridan, you're putting together the quarterly report for our next meeting, correct?
Yes, that'd be on the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so moving along to old business, I'm gonna ask Dr. Wyatt to help with this um, conversation. Uh, so the school committee, as you know, we have created goals. One of our goals was around professional development as it relates to the diversity, equity and inclusion work. Um, that the district is undertaking and Dr. Re, uh, Dr. Wyatt reached out to the Highlander Institute. Who has been giving a lot of professional development with our leadership team to explore opportunities for training for the school committee. Um, so Dr. Wyatt, will you share with us more the proposal we have in our pocket?
Um, yeah, so the Highlander Institute is um, a um, group that we've been working with, with our administrative team. In fact, we had a, I think our fourth um, session with them today, this morning. And they are very, very good. And um, uh, the, the feedback from all our administrators has been excellent. And we're trying to think, how can we sort of roll this content now out to the, to the staff and. And sort of get it embedded in some of our day-to-day practices. Um, but anyway, they, um, so what they're proposing here, I, I made contact with them. And what they're proposing is um, doing something for you as a school committee. I did mention, you know, your main function is policy and budget, but I think what they, the proposal really is sort of a recasting. Of what we as administrators are going through and the framework and model for this um. Uh, what they call CRSP, which is culturally responsive. Um, um, and culturally responsive and something pedagogy. So the question really is, and you have the, the cost there, I think is what, uh, is it nine thousand, or three thousand dollars? For two sessions. Two, what are they, two, um, can't remember, is it one, two-hour sessions?
Two, two-hour sessions, I believe.
Yeah, two, two-hour sessions. Um, so the question is, would this be of benefit to you? Would it help you just have a context for the work that we're doing? I have, I should say, I have also con- I have, I should say, I have also contacted. The other assistant superintendents in terms of what they're doing for an equity audit and what who they've been using. And there's one group called DEEP, D E E P. Which Shrewsbury has used and had very high praise of. And that might be something that I could pursue or see if they would do something for school committee that might be a little different from this. But the nice thing about this, obviously, is that it's in sync with what we're doing with our administrators. And what we will hopefully be doing with our staff down the road. So it really kind of depends on what you as a committee would like. It for professional development in this area. There was one other group that Wellesley had used. It's called Black Print Ed Consulting Group. And that's actually something that I think is partnering with D, they they're partnering with D E S D. On doing the training, but again, most of these trainings are for school personnel, not school committees, so. But this is what. The Highlander came up with and, you know, I guess they're looking for feedback. Is that something that would interest you all? Is the time about right? Is the cost about right? If not, you know, it's it's no problem. We can look for something else, but. That's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I mean, I, Karen, do you want to comment?
What did he say the cost was?
Three thousand.
The only thing I was going to indicate to you is in your school committee area of your budget, you do have that travel reimbursement. Of twenty five hundred that you are not going to be using this year because you're not traveling. So I just wanted to keep that in mind.
Right, and travel reimbursement was specifically for going to the M A S C conference. Because in the past number of years, school committee members have either driven back and forth to Hannah's every day. And paid for all that travel or stayed in a hotel down there and and funded their own hotel room. So that is why we had put that travel in there specifically for the M A S C conference, which did was not held because of the pandemic in November. So there's twenty five hundred already in there, Karen?
That's twenty five hundred that was budgeted that due to the pandemic, there's not a lot of traveling going on. I think you do have a little bit of money in. Tech assessment. As well, so I think you have the money there if it's something you wanted to do.
Okay. And from my perspective, I definitely see the value in staying with the same people who have been doing all of the P D with our leadership team and and will most likely be doing it with our staff. I I've seen the PowerPoint slides and handouts. Dr. Thompson has shared them with me that the admin team has been receiving, and it's really impressive work. That you were doing. But how does the rest of the committee feel about this professional development opportunity?
All for it.
Thank you, Dave. Are there feedback? Maya?
I think it sounds like a great idea, so I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Happy second.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor? Hi, okay, so Dr. Wyatt and I can reach back out. Figure out the next steps, and then I will be in touch with the committee around scheduling two sessions over probably the next three months. And we are permitted to talk about agenda and scheduling over email. That does not violate open meeting law, so we'll take care of that over email. All right, thank you, Dr. Wyatt, for helping us.
Yeah, great. I think I think you'll love the the presenters. They're really. Fantastic.
I'll have Dave sign the budget transfer.
Sounds good, thank you. Great, so going back to the agenda, next old business topic is the middle school building project. And I really feel like we need a section on our agenda that just says like ongoing business, because this isn't really old business, it's ongoing. But there's been a number of meetings around the middle school in terms of our core leadership team and visioning and the middle school building committee in the last two weeks. Dr. Thompson, do you want to give an update of some of that work that's been unfolding the last few weeks?
There's been a lot of work unfolding the last few weeks. So, you know, we've hired the the architect, you got to meet them at the last. At the last thing, so the, you know, the slight, the the site, the slight, the, you know, the site study, the educational visioning is going on. The determining how the current space has been used and all the other spaces around and how the elementary schools are being used and mapping all of those out. Just, you know, a lot of talk about the different P Ds, this plans and P S that plan and a lot of alphabet soup going on, and I'm just. Thankful that there's an O P M because it's. It's it it has been a challenge, but it is. An extremely, this this work to prepare and research the site. What it should look like. And why it should look that way and making that argument with the M S B A to get them to understand our needs. Where we should put it, how we should put it together is an important part of the project that I. I mean, this this. Pairing of of Compass and A I three, we're obviously very successful with the work that was done previously at the high school. We're very lucky to have. Latched up with them again, but it it is a lot of work. You know, we do have a a person, a project manager that we've that the district has brought on to help with that work. Otherwise, I think. Dr. Fraser would want to do more than just crawl and hide under her covers. But he's been already been an immense help with gathering the information for that. I don't know if there's more that you want to, we have, oh, this is a big one. We have our first community forum tomorrow night at seven o'clock. The invite is on the webpage. It has been. Sent out via Facebook and Twitter as well. It has gone home in electronic backpacks. I don't know. We've sent it home via email to parents as well. The one thing is you have to R S V P ahead of time. So you can just show up, if you just click the the link at seven o'clock, you will not get in. You have to R S V P and get a specific invite. To the event, and all are invited, but that's just how how the system works. So, you know, and especially parents of young children. Those in first and second grade, because those will be the first occupants if we're successful in this project and putting in building this school. Please, please come. We do need to show you what we're talking about and. Get some feedback from the community as part of this process.
Yeah, and in that forum tomorrow, I know, Kalia, who is our ed planner through A I three that everybody met when A I three came on December sixteenth. Will be sharing slides with the community a little bit more about the visioning sessions that took place. And sharing some of the feedback that has been received from staff. But tomorrow is interactive and they will be using some of the same online tools with members of the community to survey and start to get that data from our. Community as well. So I look forward to it. I think it'll be a good forum. The only other thing I would add, Dr. Thompson.
Yep.
Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay. You cannot hear me.
Well, we could hear you, you just can't hear us. Now you're gone. All right.
Hope she comes back.
I know, I was just wondering, should I jump in or?
Well, she's going to add a question. I don't know if you can, unless you can.
She can't fly with COVID right now, right? She can't like hop a plane and run away.
She's there now. There you are. You got unmuted, though. You're muted.
That was interesting. It said I lost my privileges to Google Drive, so.
Obviously, obviously, you need to behave yourselves, you know, get in trouble again, but that's.
I know, the the first time I lost my internet, this time I apparently lost my permissions to our Google Meet, but. Let's try that again. The one piece of information that I that I think is helpful for the community to know, in our middle school building committee meeting on Monday. We did vote on the site selection. In the school committee packet, you have the metrics of all the sites that were being considered and and the data that was used to decide, but the middle school building committee did unanimously decide that the site selection will continue to be the current site at the Coogly. So I think that's important for people to know. And are there any questions from the committee on where we are in this process? Okay, we need to update everybody, and hopefully the school committee will be able to attend tomorrow. We focused it as a school committee meeting, so you will be able to fully participate, ask questions. And not have to worry about open meeting law. Does Lily want to take over facilitating the meeting, Dr. Thompson?
Yeah, we we need to talk to Lily's older sister who's riled her up, but yes.
Teresa? Yeah, I'm right.
Do the school committee members have to do the R S V P too, so we can get the link correct?
Yeah, you still want, you want to register as well, but then when you're in as a school committee member, they'll give you different settings. So the the community will fully be able to watch everything, see the slides. But I believe participation for the community is via the chat box. I think that's what they were talking about in terms of running the meeting. But in school committee, you can be part of the panel, but still register.
Yes.
Okay, so moving along to our next ongoing business is the joint facilities update. Maya and Mary, will you catch us up on how your meeting went yesterday on that topic?
Anne Marie, if it's okay, I'll do that. So Ms. Missola and I met with. Two representatives from the Board of Selectmen, with the town manager, with Karen Sheridan, our business manager, with Tom McQuade, Molly Ahern, Emily Chambers and Molly Keen. And of course, Paul Ricardi yesterday morning to discuss the, for. To discuss the joint facilities department when we signed the memorandum of understanding last year with the Board of Selectmen. We had set up an annual review meeting to kind of discuss how things were going and to see if any changes were needed. In general, I think everybody's really happy with how it's going, but there were, there are a bunch of changes that are coming this year and had been planned. So that the budget, there's a bunch of budget things moving. So this year, there was a, the management structure was set up for the joint facilities department. And starting in F Y twenty two, joint facilities will have its own standalone budget, separate from the school department and general government. So there was a lot to talk about yesterday with regard to that. Molly Ahern and Emily Chambers shared a plan for the chart of accounts, and it was very important for Karen Sheridan to be able to talk about. How the. How, to make sure that the accounts are set up in such a way that we can pull out the information that we need for D E S I reports. But one thing that I was really pleased to see, you'll remember at our December sixteenth meeting, Ms. Sheridan shared information. Shared a version of our F Y twenty one budget, showing what it would look like if facilities were taken out so that we could have a nice baseline to build our F Y twenty two budget. And I was pleased to see that general government is going through the same exercise, and so I think this is going to be really helpful for all of us to be sure that the. That we are sure that everything that was taken out of our budget has been moved somewhere else. And that it'll be important for town meeting members to be able to see a clear crosswalk from this went to there, and so. You know, we're not trying to hide anything, and at this point, we're not trying to, we're not asking for any new money or anything like that. We're just shifting. Things in the existing budgets, but with that, we do expect that the new facilities budget will be almost seven million dollars. So it's not a small department. The other thing we talked about was school building rentals. The schools will still control policies on how building rentals are approved and things like that. We do think that it will probably make sense to. Ask for authorization at town meeting for a slightly updated revolving account fund for the. For the building rental income and. And so I think we're going to be asking for that at annual town meeting in May. But all in all, I think it went well. There's going to be a small update to the M O U just to reflect the. Where all, everything's moving in the budget, so there'll be, you know, just like an attachment to the M O U that says, okay, this is how everything's shifting. And Town Hall is working on preparing that document for us, so I think sometime in the next month or so, we'll have a new M O U that the school committee can approve.
Thank you, Maya. Are there any questions from the committee on that process? Okay, well, thank you for both Maya and Anne Marie for working on this on our behalf.
Thank you.
Hey, so moving along to policy, just a brief update, and then also one area that we wanted to get some feedback from the committee on tonight. So we had a policy subcommittee meeting just on Monday. And you have a copy of the notes and all the materials that we reviewed in that meeting. Ms. Semino joined to touch base on some student services related areas. Ms. Sheridan was there as we touched base on some operations and financing policies. The one area that we wanted to ask for feedback on tonight, and you can see that it's linked to in the agenda. Joan and I had shared in the December meeting that we were working on a letter and survey to send out to the P T Os and P T As and also the principals. To gather some feedback that it was recommended to us from the M A S C to gather before we start our policy audit. And Joan drafted the letter and the survey for the P T Os that you have in the packet before you. And then I used that and drafted a similar letter to the principals and survey. So is there any questions or feedback, or is the committee comfortable with us as a policy subcommittee sending this out to the P T Os and the principals early next week? Dave?
This is just going to the heads of the P T Os, or it's to every person in the P T O?
Oh, yeah, that's a great question. So for right now, we're starting just with the officers of the P T Os, the P T As, and also the C P A. Ms. Semino had asked us to include the C P A organization, so starting with the officers of all those at each school and then also the principals at each school. Anything that you would like to see changed before we send it out? Okay, so it's a short survey. As you can see, it's really just to get the dialogue started around fundraising and networking and equity and. As we work on all these policies, making sure we're in a good place within our district. We're going to be giving everybody, I think we said till February fifth to get back to us, so at one of the February meetings. We will share the results and feedback with the committee. Any questions on anything else that we had shared in our minutes from Monday's meeting or anything policy related that you wanted to bring up to the subcommittee? Okay, so we do officially start our audit process with M A S C on January twenty first is our first kickoff meeting. Yes, with the field reps from there. Dr. Thompson will be in that meeting, Joan and I, and Ashley, Ms. Sheridan and Ms. Semino are joining us as well, just to have that initial foundation. And figure out, you know, who do we have to pull in at different times? As everybody knows, this is going to be an eighteen to twenty four month project. And we want to make sure the appropriate stakeholders are represented as we work on each policy section, but we will be starting with the first two. Which is really about school committee authority and governance and policies of the district in terms of operations. Okay. So moving along to new business, Dr. Thompson, there is the tech update annual report.
Yeah, so in your in your packet is the education cooperative annual report and audit. It was a clean audit, no findings. Tech is in good financial shape and performing. It's it it's it's duty, its purpose of providing special educational programs for those districts that belong to the cooperative. They did, we did use the paycheck protection. Program as part of the COVID, the first COVID act. When they had to shut down, but they are fully operational and offering in person learning at tech and have been since since the fall and in our good shape. So that's the, that's the report.
Were there any questions from the committee on the tech update? And Dr. Thompson, when do you meet again for that committee?
I think it's February, beginning of February. Yeah, February fifth.
And are you still um willing and able to be representing our district on that committee, or did you?
It's just one more Zoom right now. It's not even.
Because I know pre- in previous times, we've had school committee members who represented us on tech, and then you've been doing it the last two years. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
We'll have the ability to do so.
Nope, it's good. It's a, it's a good group to work with. There's several super's on the uh, on the board, so it's good opportunity. And and, you know, just, just to kind of go back, the uh, we, you know, the Fuse Fellowship is how we got associated with the Highlander Institute, just to refresh everybody's, which was a tech program that we jumped on early and took a spot from the district that didn't want an extra spot. We had three in the first and two in the second. We're kind of on the plus now. But that work of our own personalized learning and bringing technology in, uh, we would not be what, doing what we're doing without those Fuse Fellows and early adopters that we had in those first two years. So um, they're a great organization. And like Alex said, they, I mean, I thoroughly enjoyed every, every session that we've had with them working on 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 these equity issues. Uh, and the chief proj- presenter, I think, is probably one of the best we've had all year. So um, look forward to you folks joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so next is consent agenda. We have donations tonight, Dr. Thompson.
Yep, I have to go back over to that tab. Uh, so we have a donation from Looters Environmental Incorporated for seventy-five dollars. And then the Metronic Foundation Volunteer Grant for three hundred dollars, and that's for uh the middle school.
I think there's one more. It's like, there's a space on the agenda, but do you see the other one for Prescott?
Oh, it's, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yep. Uh, the DYN Mellon Trust donation, let me pull that one up, sorry. Well, it's for a hundred dollars to Prescott School.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept these donations?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Maya. All in favor? Great, thank you. Uh, so at this time, we have school committee addenda. Uh, Maya, did you have anything this evening?
Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that it's that time of year that um nomination papers are available at um Town Hall for town meeting positions or um any of the boards in town. As I say every year, if anyone is interested in running for school committee, or I'm always happy to um talk to anybody who has questions about what's involved and what it entails. Um, I believe that um nomination papers are due, I know they're due mid-February, I think it's February sixteenth. But you can um check, and um I encourage people to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Uh, Amory?
Um, just to tell everybody to, the finish line is getting ever so close. To even though that we've got vaccines rolling out, and it seems like it might be, you know, it might be easy to let your guard down. Don't um continue to be diligent, and we will get through this.
Thank you, Amory. Uh, Joan?
Um, my addenda this evening is that um I hope the public understands that the committee and the administration is put in situations every day to make decisions that feel impossible. Um, and that we're weighing community, safety, individual rights, student safety. And it feels that mistakes um can have significant and lasting impacts on families that were unintentional. Um, and so that I hope that everybody recognizes that even if decisions are made that they do not agree with, that we are acting out of the that, what we believe is the best interest for our students, their education, and then the community as a whole.
Thank you, Joan. Uh, Dave Guttenya?
Permission to go last? Can I do that? Do you have anything to say?
Uh, you can go last. Um, I was just gonna briefly say, I hope people participate tomorrow in the community forum. As we already discussed around the middle school, we really do need community feedback. Um, and that town meeting starts, uh, special town meeting uh starts February fourth, I believe. I have that date right, right? Yes, okay, February fourth. Um, and that if people are town meeting members, be sure that you go to the town website, because there are a number of sessions being offered in January around the training for the virtual format. Um, so you don't wanna miss that opportunity um to participate. But Dave, go ahead. You can go last.
So fortunately, a a brief, short, uh, serious speech. So uh, there will be a lot said regarding the storming of the Capitol just a week ago today, and the second impeachment of the president that just happened a few hours ago, so I shall keep my comments brief. Now, in the second week of 2021, amid a once-in-a-century pandemic, a word is being used that we have not heard in a very long time. That word is insurrectionist, as in someone who commits the act of insurrection, defined as a forceful revolt against the civil authority of the established government. The president was impeached today for inciting an insurrection. The crowd he incited and stormed, uh, stormed the Capitol and committed the act of insurrection against the United States of America. A sworn federal officer was killed in the line of duty, and dozens and dozens more were injured, some egregiously. This was not a simple act of trespassing and peaceful disobedience. As all the recorded evidence is now showing us, we came dangerously close to witnessing the Vice President and members of Congress being at the mercy of a rabid mob who entered the Capitol, the express purpose of stopping the democratic process at all costs. The foundation of our society is law and order, and I have every confidence that the FBI and local law enforcement will find and bring everyone involved in this insurrection to justice. So why my role as a minor elected official on a town school committee, am I speaking on these national issues? Because the work we do here is what the very essence of what democracy is. This is what a government by and for the people looks like and what it is. It is you, it is me, is my fellow members of this school committee and our fellow fellow citizens duly elected to our municipal government. On the opposite end of the spectrum, we witness the insurrectionists. As we hear their stories, in many instances, it is becoming evident evident that our society failed them, making them easily manipulated when opportunistic leaders lied to them over and over. It is really up to all of us, as the guardians of our democracy, to arm the minds of our youth with education, so they do not fall victim to baseless conspiracy theories. We need to arm our youth with knowledge so that they will not take up arms. If we do our job, the future of America will be secure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, so at this time, um, we are able to adjourn. Um, executive session was on our agenda, but we met before the meeting. We were able to take care of all executive session business previously. Uh, so is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you, Amory. Is there a second? Thank you, Dave. All in favor? All right. So um, again, everybody, please join us tomorrow for that community forum in the middle school. Otherwise, we will reconvene as a school committee again on uh January twenty-seventh. Uh, so have a good night. Take care. Be safe.
Good night. Thanks.